Calling the meeting to order. We have a sweep of the flag. Are we doing that on our own?
We are doing that on our own.
All right, that's right. We have no kids.
We don't have a kid yet.
All right. That's right. Come in with your hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Any correspondence, Megan?
No.
Did you get any correspondence from anybody?
I did not.
You have not?
Okay.
All right. Okay. I'm guessing there's nobody signed up for public comment yet, but you should check. Okay. All right. The consent agenda. Does anybody have anything to extract from the consent agenda? Nope. I approve of the consent agenda presentation. Okay?
Second.
Second? Okay. All those in favor? Okay. You're good, Michelle? Okay. All right. So reports. PTO. Do we have any that makes sense? It's summertime. Okay. Oh, do we need to go? Oh, wait around. Okay. The SRO decision process. So one of the things you all know, and it's in your packet, there's a couple of things in your packet, is that we have to decide, we have to look at what we want to do for next year for the SRO, for security personnel, security person, SRO. So there's kind of a draft in here of setting up an ad hoc committee to look at this so that we get input from all the involved constituents. And again, just because it factors into the budget that, you know, is really already in process for next year, which seems crazy, but we're already working on the budget for FY19, this decision needs to be made pretty early in the game so that we can factor this into our plans for the budget. So I don't know if anybody has any questions about this, if anybody has any suggestions about who else we might want to include or a different way we might want to do this. Yep?
I had one thought. I'd like to list the representatives. I wonder if we want to have a group call and maybe invite two parents at large who basically put their hand, and if there's more than two, they get placed on that lottery or something like that, just so we feel and give parents an opportunity who may not be in an official position to participate in a discussion that we might be heated.
In, under the PTO?
No, because the PTO is not representative of all the parents, I think, parents at large. So maybe two representatives from parents at large, which basically, I don't know.
Because isn't everybody cares?
I read the question.
Like, you don't have to join the PTO, right?
Technically, but doesn't mean we're going to meetings.
Yeah.
Definitely not. I don't know what percentage, but every meeting I've been to has been like 20 people.
A free book or pro car even well, but so how would we, we would just say if anybody's interested, they need to let us know when, how?
I could be part of it.
Well, I think, I think it's better to come.
We could, I think one of the ways we might do it is our first principal's update that we send out, Gina, to the.
Well, there's the one for the first day of school, and then there'll be one to accept of that.
So the first day of school, you'll, you're, you send an email out to everybody. So that would be the first natural all, all school communication that will go out. It could be, it could be, you know, from, from the Board of Education, on behalf of the Board of Education, we're looking for two parents at large to serve on an ad hoc committee, blah, 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 blah.
Just my suggestion. I agree. I have the same thought, Nancy, especially to include parents in general and perhaps opening up for the open house sites, how it's talking about having some information at open house. I don't know if that's time to them, continue talking to parents about it and find out if that's after that.
Right, parents, the, the idea behind the open house was if somebody wanted to have an opinion in person, that that would be their opportunity. And we, at the first meeting, we put together some information, some background information, which is, you know, there's some background information included in this, but have some information available to parents if they want to talk about, you know, what's the issue. You know, I'm not sure, you know, there's some parents who are very well informed and some, you know, not so much. So as long as we can have some people at the, you know, prior to the meetings, if people want to come, great, and talk about it. If they don't, that's fine, too. So, so we do want to have some information available for that. In terms of the, the composition, Terry cannot participate, so I think it's okay if we just have Sandy. I mean, unless anybody feels strongly, Sandy Stein is a supportive person. We definitely need the police, obviously, Gina. And I think Nancy, you said you wanted to do it, too?
Sure.
Does anybody else want to be on, though?
You can put me there.
Okay. Excellent. Anybody else? Do you have everybody or as many people who are interested? All right. PTO, you know, they'll give us a name. We can ask, and we'll get you something for the first principal update, and the word is, you know, looking if there's any interested parents who would like to stay on the ad hoc committee.
So you said, Mr. Language, yes?
So just so I understand, we're looking for two parent representatives now?
Or, or we could, whatever.
So if we got 10, then what do we do?
Yeah. I think if, if we get 10, we don't want 10, I don't think. Unless we want 10.
That's, yeah, I mean, so however, whoever shows is fine, or do we want to cut a number?
Well. I'm not really in the discussion.
Lottery.
Yeah.
We just pick, okay. We'll just pick, we'll just put names in a hat, and we'll pick two.
So if my purposes, I would, I'd already told the PTO to be ready as we made. So, and so it's singular, one PTO representative?
Or two.
One teacher representative, or one or two, it's not if people just don't know what people are.
Yeah. I think if there's somebody who feels strongly about their, you know, like, I don't think we need 30 people, but if we have two from the PTO, and if we have two from the, you know, staff, because two people are coming from different places, you know, we want people to be representative of more than themselves, obviously, but, but I would say if there's, you know, more than one, that's fine. We don't want a 10 again. I would say we'll do the lottery if we get more than two of any.
I apologize for, this may have been lost to the grave, but I, I do feel, I do feel it's important to have someone from the office personnel who would be serving this because they have a very, they have a very clear idea as to what goes on, the comings and goings, which is definitely an aspect of security and safety. So I just, and I, I forgot to mention that, too, so.
That's fine. Ideally, again, you know, we're looking to have this decision made really quickly, but also make sure that we've got as informed, you know, a response as we can get. It's tough to always get all the information out to all the people, you know, have people get that to us, but, so, you know, whoever should be there, it really is, hopefully, a two to three meeting commitment is what we're hoping. And we're asking parents and faculty to fill out the survey at the open house sites? No, no, we need to talk about that. We need to, we need to set up the committee, and they will decide what questions are on the survey, what backgrounds in the survey, you know, the details. It was more to get an idea about, we want it to be very short, very to the point, but we also need to understand that everybody's coming from a very different level of knowledge on this. You know, there's people who heard about what happened, you know, when it was like here today, tomorrow, and we don't want anybody to get mixed up with the process we're going through now, which is completely different. You know, we're evaluating what we think our needs are and how do we meet those needs. So I think the committee needs to do that. But that'll be open house. The, the survey can go out through survey month.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Why weren't we doing that?
Yeah, yeah. No, the survey's definitely.
Tech log form.
Yes.
So I heard you talking about open house. Were you just looking to provide a sheet of information for parents to take with them at open house?
So what, what, again, very preliminarily until the group meets, was the idea that some, somebody from the committee, maybe a couple somebodies, could sit out in the cafeteria ahead of the open, open houses and say, here's some information, you know, so if people just want to pick it up and go, or here's some information, do you have questions? Do you want to talk about it? Do you have an opinion? You know, do you have like, you know, something to say about it that you want to say in person? You know, it's hard to get people together, especially so early in the year when there's already three open houses and everything else. So if we kind of piggyback on the open house, we've got maybe a fighting chance of getting some people who are interested in a face-to-face encounter and, you know, are actually going to be here. So we would not be looking to take any time away from the open house agenda.
It'll be the hour before opening starts.
Right, because we know the open house agendas are packed and we can't.
Yeah, keep going.
Okay.
So, so just in planning purposes, maybe I'm stealing the next comment here, so along with the idea that the first day of school, a newsletter from the office says, we're looking for two parents at large, we would also in that newsletter want to specify to parents that the board of, the, there's an ad hoc committee that's going to establish in terms of looking at security and safety for next year, and they were holding three parent, whatever we want to call it, open forums at 5:30 on each of the open house meetings.
That we do need to get out as, I don't know when you communicate the open house things. I mean, I know it's in the calendar already.
Right, and so August 28th is the first principal's message.
And so you would remind everybody about the open house?
Remind them about the open houses, and the first one is the 31st.
That Thursday.
And this social, PTO social is the night before.
So, again, once the group meets, they need to very quickly get together, you know, something to include in the principal update or the communication that goes out the first day of school, and also what information we want to have available to parents, if we want to provide some, some background and information sheet. We need to make sure that we talk about this as the security personnel issue as opposed to, you know, I mean, because we're not talking about physical building kinds of things.
Right, because there's a certain confidentiality and a certain privacy about that we want to maintain in order to, you know, maintain security. You know, you don't want to let everybody know everything that does really happen. So I think that's what you're referring to, and I think we've done a good job of that so far, so I think as we refer to right order.
Yeah.
There was not talk about all the bells and whistles in detail because.
Well, and also, we're really talking about what do we think our needs are, this, and maybe we need to be more expansive. I was thinking of this in terms of our needs from a security personnel perspective, not from a security.
Not from a, not from an infrastructures.
Right, not what, what, like, do we think that there should be changes in the, you know, how we do things, getting into the building, or changes in the cameras, or changes in any of those things? I was thinking of this as a very focused.
Strictly.
The personnel issue, whether it's an SRO or security, or just trying to look ahead, though, I suspect that the committee with all of these individuals on board, my guess is that they'll have difficulty making a single line recommendation without looking at the full security picture. And having gone, like, done a lot of due diligence or just around, unfortunately, just this morning, it does look like it is always a sort of a voice security picture to make that type of judgment. So I think we should anticipate that the committee might go in that direction. Maybe it'll be a decision, but I wonder if some of those details were moved to be shared in confidence. Right. I think, I think if we need to share some information about security, we're talking about the chief of police. I mean, we're not talking about people who don't understand, I think, the need for the confidentiality. If there's any parents involved, they need to, you know, you know, to agree to the confidential nature of, you know, the information that's being talked about, just like we do, you know, what we talk about security outside of, you know, the general field. Oh, yeah, but my point is that, you know, most likely, they're going to need to look at a comprehensive amount of data to make the decision at the line item. Yeah. These are all representatives of groups, so, you know, hopefully what's coming is not these individuals, their constituencies, you know, to an extent. You know, we're looking for people to bring more than themselves to this. But, yeah, I think we miss a line on what I'm trying to say. I'm just saying that, you know what I mean?
Yeah, because.
They're going to need some.
To say, hey, we don't need an SRO, you know, they need to know that we have A, B, and C already in place, this and that.
Yeah, the whole picture.
But we do need to keep it confidential because we don't, we don't want everyone to know what we actually have.
And we should anticipate that they're going to need some.
So I may be behind a little here, I guess. I know that it's definitely, we're supposed to fund it next year, correct?
Well, for FY18, which is the year that we started.
Now, that, there's no wiggle room with that or anything we can do?
To have it funded elsewhere.
Yeah.
So our understanding in terms of what the town has agreed to is they agreed to fund it for one more year. And then what we need to do, and we've never had to do as a district because it's been a gift, we've never had to say, what do we need versus what we already have versus what we might like versus what we want, and, and how do we figure out the cost benefit? Because we've never had, you know, as a school, we haven't had to look at it, obviously, as taxpayers, we've, you know, we've looked at it, but not as a school. So my understanding is there's, there's no wiggle room.
So there's no.
We got, we got an extra year.
There's no pushback we can, no pressure to be put anywhere.
Well, I think maybe what we need to do.
I think we should. Put a lot of pressure.
I think what we need to do is we need to see, what do people think? Because if there's.
I think we know what people think.
I don't think so, because there was a lot of disagreement after even, even having the town funded for this year. There was a lot of disagreement about that.
No, but I heard, but that's fine.
Okay, but I got a lot of reactions both ways, especially, you know, like, why would we spend this money on this, why wouldn't we spend it on this? I'm glad we're forming a committee, but not discussing it. All right.
But there is a board of finance member who will serve on the committee, so perhaps in the discussions, that person might take some of the.
Well, we have Sandy Stein on the case.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
We can answer anything.
So that person, Sandy would take some of that information back to board of finance.
But I think it's hard.
She, she is.
We don't know.
Always ready for any discussion. Right, right. So I think that that's good.
And again, I think it's important, what we're trying to do is come with, you know, to come together and try to figure out what do we need? And, and as a group, we'll make a recommendation, the SRO group will make a recommendation this far on what we need. So based on this conversation, would it be wise of us to have one of the selectmen on this? Well, Terry was our choice, and she can do it. I don't know that we need both a selectman and a board of finance. People think. We just do. That was your initial instinct, and now I kind of like the idea. All right, so.
I need more people that we can put pressure.
All right, so, so again, we need to be, we need to be careful about what we think is the decision of the whole group. Terry, can you see if there's somebody on the board of selectmen who can be on the committee?
Yeah, we have a special meeting on the 30th, so I can.
Yeah, I don't believe this. My decision's not going to change.
We need to have somebody before that. So I will email that then, because we, we, we need to start, well, I think they can tell us who they want to do it. Terry was our choice because she's our B and M. If that was my thinking, because she's here and she knows the details about this school.
Or, just one more thing, so there's, there's 18 members of this committee, and they need to come to consensus, and what's the timeline?
Well, it's pretty quickly. I mean, ideally, it would be in September.
Maybe 19 or so.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, ideally, we're talking about coming to our meeting in September, otherwise we kind of have to carry parallel budgets for a while until we make the decision. So the quicker we make the decision, the more we can work on the budget in light of knowledge instead of, you know, two possible, or more than one, you know, more than two, you know, because there's, you know, you could do the whole, the whole nine yards, you could do something in between, or nothing, you know, there's, there's, so you have, we have to do this as quickly as we can. And, and these people, these people are, again, you know, we're talking about survey of parents, which I think is where we're going to get most of our information. We also have people from the police commission, and we have, you know, Frank Capiello, who can tell us what are our options, you know, from their perspective, which we haven't explored.
From a pragmatic standpoint, from terms of meetings, we know that the first day of school is Monday. The first day of school, we're going to send out a communication to all families about a lot of things about the first day of school, but one of those things will be, we're looking for two parents at large to serve on an ad hoc committee that's been established. We'll also be putting in that newsletter.
And there will be a lot of research, and so.
We can indicate that, yes. You know, if more than two parents show interest, we will do a lottery, and we'll also be indicating that we are planning to have three parent forums very soon, at 5:30 time, right before each of the open houses. Where I'm going with this is, it may have already been said, or maybe implied, we need to really have a meeting, and I know that some of the people who, you know.
This week.
This week. I've talked to the police commissioner, the police chief of police, and so on and so forth. I'm suggesting this Thursday that we get started because we, a weekly Thursday will be the first open forum that we'll have for parents, so.
So Nancy and Paul, can you make Thursday?
It's Thursday night?
Yeah.
6:30 to 8:30, it would be a time I would suggest perhaps that we could. We, we have very limited, we have very limited opportunities in order to be able to ready to.
Thursday.
Thursday.
Six?
6:30.
I can do this. Yeah, I can do that. Paul?
Do you have a screen?
Okay, I won't. Okay. So I would say Lynn, if you, if you have any input on like background, like, you know, that kind of stuff, send it, or, you know.
It's okay.
Let me know, let Paul know, or Nancy know.
Yeah.
All right, so Thursday at 6:30. Gina, you can do that.
I'm upside down.
So good. Glad you're on.
I'm wondering about location for this. This is going to, this could be, you know, not everybody will be there because we have a few, we know there'll be a few episodes, we don't have our parents at large quite yet, that'll fall into place, but do we want to have that meeting here, this, in the library?
Yeah, I would say that would be great. Yeah, we don't need a setup, though. There's usually tables here.
The comfy section might be available at that point.
There's the PD.
Oh, the PD is here that day.
So, I mean, I can move our PD, so that this other be broken down, set back up.
Or we can meet the ROPANDA. We can meet anywhere. We don't have to meet where we're going to, we don't want to disrupt anything if you have a setup.
Comfy section, if it's all sudden.
Well, you should, well, choose an existing setup this year, I think, I'd definitely, you know, actually, whatever.
comfy section should be fine.
All right, so I will contact for a board selectman person. Bob, you're taking care of Robert, Frank, Capiello.
Frank, Rob, I've got, I told, I told the principal about, hello. We've talked to, I've talked to the PTO, I've talked to Doreen from the teachers' union, I've talked to record department, John Anemo, we should be attending, Captain Salieri's extended day, I've got an office representative to line up queue, so.
Okay, so in terms of the other information on here, if, that will be some of the detailed work of the committee. We have a mechanism for getting a survey out very quickly and giving the responses very quickly, so that's, you know, easy. The information on the open houses, that will be, you know, really kind of whoever we can catch and whoever can attend. So if, you know, you happen to be somebody who's going to one of the open houses, you know, I can come early, you know, we'll make sure there's enough committee members there to, you know, to have a discussion if there's anybody who's interested.
But there is going to be a public forum prior to those open house meetings from 5:30 to 6:30.
There's going to be, prior to the open houses is when it is any parents who are interested in having a discussion or getting information or anything, talking about it, we'll make sure there's committee members at each of the open houses for an hour before they start, and they can, you know, give opinions, they can ask questions, whatever it is that parents, if there's parents who are interested in a face-to-face.
I will not write that description until we've had our meeting on Thursday night because, you know, the committee as a whole coming together can.
So Thursday night, we should be able to get the stuff we need for the 28th and the stuff that we would need for an informational piece on what the issue is, you know, in a little bit of that. Were there any suggestions about the summary? If you have anything that you think should be included that's not here, get it to somebody who's coming to the, you know, committee. So get it to Paul, Nancy, myself, or Lynn, okay? The stuff that's listed here is, I'm not sure parents have much of an idea what an individual budget item costs in our budget, so this was to get, you know, some points from parents. All right, is there anything?
Motion.
Oh, yeah, we need.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll establish an ad hoc committee to do the SRO process with the membership and charge to the committee as presented.
All right. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Arna, can I just make a comment?
Yes.
There were some questions that parents, I overheard, that parents thought that Vinny Lynch was associated with, the SRO was associated with the dare component of sixth grade, and that that would be eliminated. You may just want to have somebody address that at the meeting.
The dare is not.
Right.
Dare is dare, and it's separate, and has nothing to do with.
Yeah, right.
Okay. All right. We have to adopt the board event goals? Or, we're actually still on here? On the agenda?
We have more board event goals.
Yeah, they're not in the same order necessarily. So board event goals, everybody saw what was included here. This was from our retreat discussion. Can we get a motion?
Can you just, can I?
Yes.
We can discuss that motion.
That's what we're supposed to do. We're supposed technically to make a motion and discuss it, although we do it the other way.
I move that we adopted 2017, 18 board event organization goals as presented.
Okay. Okay. You had some discussions?
Yeah, just so it's not really as presented, actually. Go for, I do want to make clear that we're not just focusing on health issues in the lecture series. I just feel like I, I think that we've been considering several different.
Okay, so it says such as healthy food, good sleeping, and other issues of interest?
Great, but then it says initial focus on health related topics, can that be used at the health curriculum, those topic areas? I think that that's, that's a bold ask for, for us to do that and also get more curriculum for.
I don't know, just, we weren't, yeah, that, that was what we discussed, and maybe not. My understanding from the retreat was, one of the goals of the lecture series related to health items was that maybe we could use some of the information that was developed for that series as information that we could maybe see in the short term before an overall health curriculum review was done. Are there components of what was maybe presented that could be used in, in the health curriculum? If that's not what people thought was true, that's what I thought we talked about.
I think that sets a precedent, because then the next topic, you know, I don't know about, talk about diversity and inclusion, but then does that mean it's then going to necessarily get integrated into the curriculum? I mean, I think that's, that's a real area that we should be a little bit careful about writing about the update to health. I, I think the series is great, we don't know exactly where it's going to take it, but it puts a lot of pressure on the lecture series, all that, it just, my mind.
So what, what, so.
Yeah, I want to strike the last line.
You want to speak the last sentence?
Yeah.
I know, is that what you want?
It doesn't make a difference to me.
Anybody else?
I don't feel strongly about keeping that in.
Okay. Anybody else?
Well, do we just wanted to say develop a plan to involve community support involving a lecture series?
Yeah, that's where I also recall the retreat.
Develop. Develop community people. A lecture series involving local experts. We want to say community people? I'm not sure what we're saying.
Community experts?
So initiate a lecture series leveraging community experts. You want to add community on various education topics such as healthy food habits, good sleep habits, and other issues of interest. End of story. That's what you're suggesting?
Yeah, I'm suggesting.
Okay. Does anybody else think that we should leave the last sentence in? No. I'm taking that as a no. Any other changes or any other discussion? All those in favor? As amended? We should say as amended? Everybody has to vote. All those opposed? Did you vote? Okay. All right. You got everybody, Marsha? Okay.
I'm very proud of our work in this area. So thank you, Chair, for facilitating that discussion.
Superintendent's report.
Before we go on to that, do we need to make procedurally, Marsha's appoint procedure, we wanted to establish.
The curriculum committee?
I wasn't sure if she was going to go over the roster as part of board goals.
Oh.
Or before committee reports. That's the only.
It's maybe the most appropriate.
We have to establish curriculum committee as a standing committee.
Okay. So what are the things before we can approve of the committee's structures? And I know, Paul, that you might want to make some changes. But before we can approve who's on the committees and chairing them, we have to actually create the curriculum committee as a standing committee. So we do have to change one of our policies, which we have a copy of here. So did everybody have a chance to look at that policy? Okay. So all we'd be doing at this meeting is adding the curriculum committee. The policy committee will be looking at that in its entirety, you know, separately. But we do have to actually change it at this meeting in order to go forward. That's right? So is there a motion?
There is a motion out here about standing committees.
Okay.
I move that we revise policy nine, one, three, two to reflect the curriculum committee as a standing committee.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, great. All right. So, and I'm sorry, this was, this was where you had the list, Marsha, in this item? The list of committees?
The list of committees should be.
Attachment here, yes. It's right after the Woodbridge Board Goals.
It's right after the board goals.
So it looks like this.
Okay.
And everybody, I think, got the email. So anybody who had sent something to Marsha indicating an interest got whatever they asked for. So Paul has mentioned he might be interested in something else. I don't know if anybody else wanted to make any changes. We certainly can do that. You are on policy and curricula. Policy and curricula?
Okay.
She's not listening to policy.
Oh, really? That's not good. Oh, because.
I figured I could show up anyway.
No, she can do.
Okay. Okay. But we can just use your email address. I will say.
You can pick my email address off.
I'm sorry, Marsha. And Paul, did you want to make a change before we? Remember, everybody can come to every meeting. We don't vote. You can't vote at these meetings. So it's, everybody has the same place at the table, whether you're, it's really, the most critical thing is if you're on the committee, you need to be there or let Marsha know because we have to have at least two board members to have the meeting go ahead. So that we want to be careful of, but other than that. So Nancy's setting up her first policy meeting. John's setting up his first facilities meeting. We already had the first curriculum meeting, which we'll talk about in a few minutes. And finance is continuing the same, seeing that night.
Second Monday.
That's right. Okay. We don't have to approve, is right?
No.
All right. All right. So I think, are we back to superintendent's report? Yes?
Right.
Okay, great. So we have a few items to bring to your attention this evening. First, from this past week, Friday, most of you know from my date to you as well as you can't miss it in the news that the governor executed a revised order which will guide state spending until a state budget is in place. And as is in the case of many towns, if not most towns in the state, the educational cost sharing grant for Woodbridge was reduced to zero. So that's for now, and we hope that that is not the case as the state budget is eventually put in place and it reduces funding at the levels that we believe it should be at. But that is the case for right now. We have a very good working relationship with our town fathers here and certainly, at this point, it's not having any impact on what we're doing in terms of staffing or any other programmatical aspects that we have here now. School opening. Gina will talk a little bit more from the principal's perspective about a lot of the activities that took place today and that are coming up, but I just want you to know that things are ready to roll and we are welcoming all teachers and staff back tomorrow. They'll be all meeting in the South Assembly Room for our opening and to start our PD activities off for the three days. Just on a big global perspective, just from a thirty thousand foot view, our professional development activities for the week will encompass providing opportunities for teachers to know what kind of summer curriculum work was done for their respective grade levels or areas. We'll also be spending time helping all teachers, not just our teacher leaders, but all teachers, understand more about the professional learning community model and bring us all back to the same page. We've both had different levels of training over the years in professional learning communities and we'll be providing an afternoon of training for that for all certified staff. And there will also be time during the course of this three days for teachers to be involved in the various strategic plan initiatives and continuing to work on that with their colleagues. So that's, that's just really a very big overview. There's other things planned for the week. We will all receive the professional development activities in their detail on Friday for myself. We're looking forward to welcoming children back on Monday, of course, and it's a shortened day as it always has been. We're looking forward to that and the building is getting ready. We thank our custodians and our, and our office staff for all they've done to help make our ready, our building ready for the opening. Last year's budget, the FY two thousand and seventeen budget, the budget that we just closed out that you actually approved in the consent agenda, police report that we ended the year with a small surplus of nineteen thousand and two hundred and thirty-one dollars. So that was a good thing considering where we were during the course of the year. In terms of enrollment, you see an enrollment sheet in your packet. Enrollment numbers are certainly running strong and they're close to projections. We're projecting closer to thirty new students this year and we are getting close to that. So we certainly are realizing what was projected for us. We do have some grade levels that are exceeding by just a couple of students. The guidelines that we've given place, overall, things are, things are happening the way we kind of anticipated them to.
I have a question on this. So we're showing out of district S six? I thought we had eight.
So that's, some of those, some things have not been updated quite yet because they're, because things haven't been officially yet.
Okay. So at the end of last year, were we at six or were we at eight?
We were at.
We were at eight at the end of last year. I don't think for this year.
I'll have to go back and look.
Okay. All right. If you could just go, I just, the only reason why I remember eight, well, I don't know why I remember that, but because it was the largest number we've had in a number of years.
Yeah, I'll have to go back and check that. In regards to staffing, we're in a good place regarding staffing. All of our certified positions have been filled, including our anticipated long-term music substitute, which will start in October. We have also filled a couple of vacant teaching assistant positions and we have filled seven of our ten building intern and building substitute positions. So that's moving forward.
And our goal is ten?
Our goal is ten.
So we're still. We'll make substitutes at this point?
We are, we are hoping that a few more interns will also play out. So we're, we, the good news there is that we're not necessarily counting on people like that on day one. Usually the real needs for those really start to happen in weeks two and three. So we have a little time left in order to see what the intern situation is for University of Bridgeport and the other, and the other universities that we've made arrangements with. The interns have been coming in slower this year than they did last year, that's for sure. Slower than we anticipated, slower than those universities have anticipated. It may, it may show that fewer students are entering the teaching profession at this point than they had originally.
And because you went backwards on me a couple times.
Okay, we're right ahead.
Can you just, just remind me again, what are the class size guidelines?
Sure. So class size guidelines are for grades K through three, seventeen to nineteen, and for grades four through six, twenty-one to twenty-three.
It says nineteen to twenty-one.
I'm sorry, nineteen to twenty-one. Thank you. Those are for you.
So the grades that are, you mentioned are like two to six.
So grade two is, grade two is clearly across all the different rooms is a few over. Grade six has some classrooms that are a few over. And there, even the sheet that you're seeing tonight, there are still some students moving in. So actually, there's a few updates from even the sheet that we already have. So, you know, we're experiencing growing enrollment. And so in some situations, like we have one grade four that's over the twenty-one, one class. In grade five, we are in good shape in grade five. Grade three has, their classes are all at twenty right now. So that's one above the guideline.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
This is August twenty-one, so please, please, just change your class status.
Oh, they're gonna change.
Right. So we had it earlier in the day and we've had, we've had move-in information come in during the course of the day. So we have to know. And this, and it was a lot of people who wait till the last minute to do their registration.
There's more that we have to do.
But that's, so what that means is not that fourteen people showed up at our door today.
That means over a period of time, you know, we have an idea. They came, they wanted to register,
and now all paperwork is finalized and, and so there's still a small stack left, still incomplete, waiting for that information. But we can't officially place someone till they, till they register.
Okay. You can go back ahead again now.
We'll get you the information about the out of district. I apologize that I have that verification tonight. Lynn will talk a little bit more a little later on about the curriculum committee, but I'm really pleased to have handed the first curriculum committee that we had last week and we've identified meeting dates and topics for the first four months of the year. So that will be discussed a little more later in the meeting. I'd like to thank all of you around the table for sending in your pictures and biographies or confirming your biographies or altering those. And you will see these on this coming Monday in my first parent update. That will be part of the first day pack at the first teach home. So thank you for that. You all are very good on the back page. I won't go into much more detail. We've already talked a little bit about summer school this past, in one of the previous meetings, but we did have a great summer school program with enrollment numbers going up. We will have a presentation to the board at a point in the near future. A little more updating about details on summer school this year, but it was a very, very successful program for sure. Kayden Capsa Conference, I think you folks know about the opportunity that board members have to attend this annual event. It's November seventeenth and eighteenth. So please let Marsha know if you're thinking about attending. You can certainly attend for just one day or both days. And we're looking to try to get people registered early if you are planning on going so we can get the best rate. So please let us know by the twentieth of August. There's also another opportunity for new board members to go to a leadership conference on December seventh. So you might want to also take advantage of that as well. Smarter Balance and CMT Science scores are in. I've already shared with you folks smarter balance scores, but the influence for the greater public, our smarter balance scores sort of follow the state trends. The state trends were that MAP increased slightly and so we certainly increased slightly. And language arts decreased slightly throughout the state this week. We're still in the same basic place in our DIRD as well as in the state in terms of ranking. We'll be providing a detailed report in September for that. CMT Science just came out in terms of the scores for that and eighty-three percent of our students were at or above goal, which is levels three and four. Again, that will be part of our presentation in September through you. Last but not least, and I'm just checking to make sure there's an update here. We have a new mission and vision which you folks embraced and endorsed back in June and this is the new poster that everybody, every staff member will get as a gift. I use the word gift tomorrow and something we can hang in every classroom. And so they go laminated, you can, we can put ribbons on and all that. But so this is alive and well and we're moving forward with that and having teachers talk to kids and make this part of what we are and who we are and where we're going. And that concludes my superintendent's report.
Okay. Did anybody have any questions on anything Bob went over? All right. So open choice options. We had said at one of our prior discussions that we would look at enrollment and Bob has verified that there are, you know, children still interested in open choice if we decide to add slots. We have fourteen? Twelve?
So just to remind you, we had, we historically had twelve slots. This past year, you folks voted to add two slots. So we now have fourteen. We actually have fourteen students who are signed up for this year. So that's two more than we typically have for the current year starting next week.
And they're included in this August twenty-first enrollment?
Yes. Report. Yes. Yes, they're already there.
Because most of them are systems.
Actually, there's only, only two new students actually, because it was all the other ones. So the two new kindergarten ones that we added are the ones that were added, but correct, they were all already here previously. We're adding two seats. So, right, which we've already, so that's already done. That's already in place.
I'd just like to note that in kindergarten, we do have learning three, 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 two, two. Each of those classes based on our guidelines for class size.
So let me just, just, just because, like I said, the numbers have changed a little bit. So our six kindergarten classes, six kindergarten classes currently have, one class has eighteen, one has sixteen, and all the others have seventeen. So at the current time, that's what we have and the guideline for kindergarten is seventeen through nineteen. Till tomorrow.
Do you have an idea of how many are?
I think I have two or three sitting waiting.
So we either have a discussion before we make a motion or we can have a motion.
Could you just say that one more time?
So, so we have six.
We have a sixteen?
We have a sixteen, an eighteen, and the rest are seventeens. And the guideline is seventeen to nineteen for that.
We might have three in the pipeline, right, Gina? I mean, it's already upward. We need to be here.
Okay. For kindergarten?
For kindergarten, yeah, kindergarten.
So it's two or three, I don't remember. She's got to say.
Okay. So I don't know, did you want to make a motion or no?
Do we have capacity or the person in the board to increase the number? I certainly would love to give an opportunity for two people who desire to be in this major school who have a transformative experience. I know we agreed on fourteen at the time, but it seems like we do have capacity in kindergarten. At this level, if we push the limits, we'd have two, six, seven, eight, nine. We went up to nineteen in each class, but even given the cushion, I would recommend that we consider two or additional slots.
So do you want to make a motion?
I would love to make a motion on Calhoun. Six. Let's say four additional slots in kindergarten. A total of eighteen slots for the open choice program.
Discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. Your second question, Megan?
And now we just go.
So, I'm gonna offer my opinion. I, I know it's not a financial decision, but given the situation with the state, I think that we can assume we'll get nothing for, if we get a minimal amount currently. We lost six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, like, yesterday. I don't really know that, that we can count on, and I'm saying it's not a financial decision, I'm just saying financially, I don't have any confidence personally that we would be getting that money. If anybody was considering any financial consideration as part of this.
Is it fair, supporting, maybe this has been open choice ever, and your knowledge has been, line item that's been cut, have we received those funds, any of the subsidies funds?
Has education cost sharing ever been cut?
It hasn't been cut, but there also have been years that they've added a premium. So in our case, the three thousand dollars, there have been a few years that it's been thirty-two and thirty-five hundred. I'm going back, at this point, about twelve or thirteen years. I can tell you that those years have not happened in at least twelve years.
Actually, for the benefit of-
Is it cut? No, but-
For the benefit of others, we get an allocation, a subsidy for each open choice student. Depending on the percentage allocation that we receive as a percentage of the whole population of the school, so two percent, four percent, or six percent, is given a different subsidy for each student, depending on that. So, I guess, I don't want to speak just grant, you know, without the data, I guess I would like to know how, has open choice, like, they never, they're eliminated from the budget? And I didn't see it.
To my knowledge, yeah.
Yeah, not to my knowledge either, of what I'm researching. And so I don't think we use it according to these information, even though it's, you know-
Sure, I've seen the budget constraints, but, and, and again, we haven't had education cost share go from the amount allocated to zero in the last twelve years either.
Probably longer, but, yeah.
So, are we expecting any, any more kindergartners? Generally, how do we get, we don't know, right, Gina?
I, I-
We could get five more, right?
You could?
Yeah. I, I think we're, we have more than enough already. That we, we moved it to sixteen, I think we should stay, for sure. It's too risky, at this point, to move it up.
So usually we should leave it at one.
I suggest we don't, we leave it as it is.
Leave it at fourteen, okay. Okay, is there any other discussion?
Maybe we need to have a buffer, for sure, and expect that more students may come in and not wanting to go for sure, not over nineteen, if possible. And then often want to be more conservative, and consider two, Nancy, as a compromise, versus, love to compromise at two.
Are there any other waiting lists, Bob?
So, so there are, there are a number of students, I asked Open Choice to send us a list of how many interested parents and families there are. There's a number of interested parents and families, some of them have indicated Woodbridge as a, as a choice, and some have indicated Woodbridge even as a first choice. I don't know what percentage have indicated it as a first choice, but I do know there's interest. I also do know that, at this point in time, since it's August twenty-first, that even if we were to call those families tomorrow, and say, the Woodbridge Board of Education just decided to add this number of seats, some of those parents have already made up their mind for their kids, and it's too late for us, we're ready to go.
I know, I disagree, they're gonna have tears of joy in their eyes.
Next is not gonna go for that one, Bob.
I'm reiterating exactly what Ben Bailey has told me, from, who is the person who sends me the information.
You run a fabulous school, and everybody wants to be.
So, I don't know what the response would be, but there are definitely people who are on a waiting list, who have expressed an interest, and once, whatever the decision this group makes, we would take that decision, if there was a need to, to let tomorrow and say, here's what we're looking for, and then she would go by her process and find out, if actually anybody said yes.
Do you have any specific sort of numbers who have, on our waiting list, if they have?
So the waiting list that was provided to me is not a waiting list, it's just for Woodbridge, it's a waiting list for all, for all districts, and some of them may want us more than another town, but there's seven students on a kindergarten waiting list. Six for first grade, four for second grade, I can write up the ranks, two for third, one for fourth, or three for fourth, one for fifth, none for sixth. So kindergarten is the most predominant number, certainly that are, that there was interest by parents.
So, is there additional discussion?
Other than, I just, so our guidelines say seventeen to nineteen.
Yep.
If I'm adding this correctly, we don't have a class under seventeen, correct?
We have one at sixteen right now.
Well, they're adding three.
No, they're adding three, so no.
Yes, we don't have anybody under seventeen. We have one at sixteen, one at eighteen, right now, but, okay.
So, so we'll have three at eighteen, and three at seventeen, after what we anticipate tomorrow's-
Tomorrow, or the next, within the next few days, when final off the papers, come in.
Okay, so is there any other discussion? Do we want to amend the motion, based on what Megan said? Or do we want to vote on this motion, and then Megan another one?
We have to amend the motion to change additional?
So the motion is currently authorized, two additional slots in kindergarten for a total of sixteen. Is there any more discussion?
Gina, is there any, do you know how many add, we added in kindergarten last year? Is that just not something you would know, in the last week?
Oh, in the, wait, in the last week of school?
Yeah, for last year, yeah.
In, in the, in the first week of school?
Yeah.
The first week.
In the beginning, right in the beginning.
Yeah, exactly.
Off the top of my head, I do not probably, you know, probably get any of that information just readily at my dinner, so.
It's not gonna help us, though.
I'm good.
I feel, Gina, I mean, again, I'm still against the two, because we're, as Garrett just said, we're already up against, we added fourteen kids today, three, three in kindergarten tomorrow. I, I bet your learning will be over. And I think the low end in kindergarten is, is better. Lynn could probably tell you better than I am, I've never taught, but-
Yeah, and then I think we have to think about sending the, those kids on to first grade, and the influx of kids the following year. Historically, first grade, the enrollment has, there's been an influx in new students also in first grade, wish I could kept that folder with all those numbers in it, but, yeah, so that concerns me, and, and, you know, perhaps the eighteen, nineteen is a reasonable number in kindergarten, because there are the two adults in the room, and it lowers the stu-adult ratio, but then they're sent to first grade, and that, that's not the case, so I would express some concern about raising those numbers as well.
We can give you the information. I don't know if you can get it, I just didn't have it in my head. So, you know, just right prior to the start of school, we were at ninety-four. So when the enrollment was then, again, on September sixteenth, it was ninety-seven. And then by January, we were at ninety-eight, and then by June, we were at one hundred? One hundred one.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
That was kindergarten.
Kindergarten.
But now we're at eighty-seven.
No, we're at eighty-seven, plus the, the math students.
Ninety-nine, a hundred.
It was a hundred and seven.
Hundred and-
Yeah, twenty, twenty of those kindergartners went to math.
Math.
So, you know, I have, this is this year's kindergarten, but there's a kindergarten last year.
Would be first.
Right, and you have to add math.
Eighty-seven plus twenty is the one that was-
I guess I'd like to, I just like to see in that very complicated world, I know the benefits of geographic diversity that has had, my, my children have benefited from, have helped, not just in our town. Also, I think, again, the benefit of having open choice students who have different types of upbringing is really essential to learning, and we shouldn't think of it as just a gift to those students, but also, it's an opportunity to take our own children out of isolation, which is a point of open choice. So, again, I think there are benefits here that sometimes are difficult to quantify, but there is a value here that we've all benefited from, and our children have all benefited from by having some of these students in our classrooms.
Any additional discussion? Okay, so the motion stands at adding two positions to kindergarten for a total of sixteen. All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, that was everybody, right? Okay. Let's see, facilities committee, we don't have a date yet, but you're-
I didn't contact Marcia.
Okay, all right.
There's nothing to report this morning.
Okay, all right, and finance, the, the only thing that we bring up here, there was a statement in your packet, between Cade and there's a group of Board of Education chairs who have drafted this proposal to send to the legislation. We can, you know, we can either choose to go ahead and add our names to the list of districts that are, you know, basically asking for, you know, a phase in period of impatient for budget changes, or not. So, everybody's had a chance to look at that. I don't know if anybody wants to make a motion that we send this from Woodbridge to the legislature, or not. I'm, I'm not convinced of that this is gonna make a difference, but I will make the motion that we authorize the administration to form a budget reduction resolution to the State General Assembly.
Awesome.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? All those abstained, something like stating? Oh, you don't, I didn't see, so sorry, is that right? Okay.
Curriculum.
Curriculum, yeah.
I'm happy to report that, sorry, I'll turn on. I'm happy to report that our initial meeting, the initial meeting of the curriculum committee was held on Thursday, August seventeenth. At that meeting, we established a meeting schedule, and those meetings will be held on the first Thursday of the month, with the exception of the November meeting, which will be the second Thursday of the month, November ninth, at four-thirty, so that we can allow for teacher participation on the curriculum committee. We have proposed topics that were set through the December seventh meeting. Those are in your packets. We invite everybody to come and participate, invite the parents to come. I think there's gonna be some blurbs sent out in parent notices regarding the topics. And for board members, if you review the topics and provide any input on the presentations at least one month prior to the topic presentation, as we've done in the past, I think that would be really very helpful, and then we can get the information that we really want from those who are presenting.
Lynn, I'm just trying to pull up the minutes here, does it include a schedule?
It does.
It does, okay.
Yep, so in the pack, in the, this month's board backlog, under the curriculum committee update, you will find the minutes of our meeting, which outline the-
Oh, the topics.
Topics that will be discussed.
So we don't have a separate document that listed, okay, like we came into the, okay, all right, thank you. I'm sorry, I thought we were gonna list everything. And you're saying-
Did you want something else, Margaret?
No, absolutely not. So, if you're interested in focusing any of the topics, the month before the topic is brought up is when we need to, you need to come to the meeting and say, this is what I'm interested in regarding this.
Absolutely, so that we can pass that information on to whomever the presenter's going to be. And so we'll try to give you some information about what those topics are. At the September meeting, it's going to, we're going to talk about the summer curriculum. So there'll be an overview of summer curriculum work, and a curriculum template for math, and science is going to be shared at that meeting, and I believe Gina is going to present. So if there's anything that anybody's looking for in terms of information about summer curriculum work, just let us know, and Gina will include that in her presentation.
Is there any questions for Lynn? Thank you.
And Margaret, if I could just remind you that we have a current agenda, Gina, yes?
Oh.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Just, I'm just throwing that in, as a side.
You were just rolling along so well, you know.
I'm good.
Did you miss that?
You guys were in a groove, so I said, I'll just wait.
I think we left.
I'm sorry. Well, it kind of flows, because I, I, I-
Okay.
Bet she was gonna be a presenter.
You segued right into that.
Segued into that. So, welcome back, everyone, I hope everybody had a great summer. We are getting ready to roll. Today was an indicator of what an awesome kindergarten that we will have. We had our bus orientation for the kindergartners, so thank you to Brad Cohen and David Perdomo, who did a great job providing all kinds of information and answering questions, and to our kindergarten audience, that was, we had quite a large number, three buses full. They did not take the bus ride, just kind of waved and sent them on their way around the block. All the children got to see a little bus safety video, be a part of the bus safety team, and one of the stickers on the way out to prove that they were part of that team. So it was great, and we were able to answer questions of parents. So, thank obviously Brad for setting that up every year, and for the parents who take the time on, it's super important, but the children were great. We also had a new teacher, teacher assistant, substitute, and intern, and four new teachers today. We were very busy today. So we have a small group of faculty members who gathered together to learn a little more about each room, but I'm also thankful to Peter Paulsy, Ollie Dono, Jeanne Lowe, Doreen Mero, Doreen Giaquinto, I don't think I missed anybody. They came today to welcome and talk to the new members of our staff. So we really appreciate that. Some eager interns, ready to learn. We have been fortunate with the small number that we do have. Hopefully, we will have some more, like, to get some great candidates. The ice cream social, I will put in a plug and put out a flyer today, and I promise to not say what was being served to all the little kindergarten friends at ten o'clock in the morning. So, the ice cream social, again, hopefully you can all make it, it's been well-attended, but a wonderful way to kick off our year. We've seen lots and lots of staff around, so they are getting ready to open up, and so we'll have everybody back tomorrow, and a pleasure, good school year. Thanks for letting chat this morning, that's all right. Any questions?
Any questions for Gina?
Okay, all right, Megan?
Okay, policy. The first policy meeting will be five-thirty on September nineteenth. Subsequently, we'll have two additional meetings as well. We'll deal with some of the standard policy issues that we need to do so, but also I've been looking at the Cade policy site for all the different districts, and there are things that we actually have, do not have listed in our own site. So after just reviewing some of that, I might suggest in the policy release some things that we might want to fill in, so that we might be sort of comparative to, comparable to other districts. The nineteenth is, is it, what day is it?
It's Tuesday.
Tuesday, okay. And that's over at the district conference room, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay, Cade liaison, Megan is our Cade liaison, so she will keep us updated on all things Cade related.
This is Megan Roll, and Bob stole what I was going to say, so.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
So I'll just reiterate.
We have one signed up, so you might as well say it again. What did you sign up for, I'm sorry?
So, no, no, I don't-
Yes, you are, so we processed your registration.
No, it was just regarding the convention coming up in November, that we have another week to do our early registration for that. Just to kind of add on to, though, I don't know if everyone's had a chance to actually follow the link, to look and see, but they have some pretty interesting, this might not be new information for those of you who have been on the board, but for those of us who are new, it might be interesting to go to, and have some really great workshops, so. Worth a look to see what there are.
And I think, I mentioned, it's Friday and Saturday, so if you can't do one of the days, and can do the other day, I think you can sign up by day, so you don't need to make the trigger for both days, it's in this day. Friday and the Saturday. It is, no, no, it's-
Is everybody getting- As I'm learning what, what my role will be, too.
Everybody's getting all the Cade stuff, you're getting the Cade journal in the mail, the little newspaper. If you're not, should they let you know?
Yes, they're not, yes, but they've all been registered on Cade, we've verified that as well.
Okay.
And Megan has been adding this early, so.
Because you get emails from a variety of people.
And then-
And the Cade journals, once a month?
Yes.
The newspaper that comes out.
Okay. I think, I think that's good. I mean, there's a few other workshops coming up as well, just to keep our eyes open.
Oh, I was going to mention, it's not a CAE, but everybody got the FOI, the town holds a meeting. Yep. And I think it's the night of an open house, so I think it's like September twelfth, does anybody remember? So that's not ideal, obviously, but if you're not happening to be at that one, it is the reiteration of things like, you know, what, what ends up being a FOLI-able if you use an email to everybody, you know, those kinds of things. So, you know, it's just, it's a good thing to sit through, they apparently are videotaping it, so that we can all see it, even if we can't make it that night, so that's what we're doing, of course.
You're all set? Megan?
Yes.
Upcoming meetings, I think the ones for next month, we have S-Back and an update from tech. Those are the two.
Correct. And the S-Back presentation will include CMT science as well. To the greatest degree possible, they have released that information, it's not fully released, but it's preliminary released. In the tech plan, we're planning on doing exactly what it says here, the impact on budget, and just talk about our replacement plan, and really talk about, not, not talk about the curriculum aspect of technology, but about the equipment part of technology, and where we are and where we're going.
Did anybody have anything for the S-Back? This is, this is just the S-Back and CMT, it's not the full accountability, you know, scoring. So this is our actual scores, where, you know, you'll talk about what happened at the state level, what happened in our level, nationally, you know.
Not nationally, but we'll talk about, but we'll go further, and we gave you the overview scores for the entire building, but we'll go, we'll break it out by grade level. I'm sure we'll, will we have the growth at this point, the growth, the growth will not? I can't remember now.
I don't think it's finalized.
Yeah, so, but we'll do more detail to you in terms of how our, how our students have moved from one year to the next year in terms of just percentage of students at our goal, that kind of thing.
Okay. Did anybody have anything that they were kind of hoping would be included in this presentation, information, or anything else? We don't, we don't have as much information as we have when we go through the whole accountability, you know, state accountability, so.
We'll use a similar model to what we did last year.
Yeah, everybody.
Yeah, that we go through.
Yeah. Okay. And then for tech, like Bob said, it's really more, you know, kind of, you know, what's, what's our need? We did eliminate the technology replacement budget for FY eighteen, so it's, I think, looking at what we're going to do for eighteen, and then give us some ideas about nineteen? Okay. And, excuse me, are we going to get some capital information as well, or this is really just kind of the replacement?
In terms of what we might be suggesting for capital budget? Your question, right?
Yeah. We don't need to, I was just asking.
It can, I mean, we can, we can, we can craft it from that particular angle, as to what would this cost be as an add-on to our operating and capital budgets based upon the number of machines and the number of iPads and so on and so forth. We could do it, we could do that in that matter. Numbers sometimes change, costs sometimes change, so a cost now might be different in January or February, price-wise, but we would do current pricing.
So I would be interested in where we're at, you know, do we have an iPad for every kid, are we at a one-to-one, do we own eight hundred and fifteen iPads, do we, you know, what, what do we have as our actual existing equipment? And then, I think, maybe John or Garrett maybe mentioned earlier, aging. So, you know, two hundred iPad's are more than five years old, two hundred are less, you know, are two to four years old, whatever. So the aging, and then again, what, you know, what, what would we, what would our, our goal be ideally in terms of replacement? And again, I know prices can change over time, but a rough idea of the costs of those things.
Did anybody else have any other kinds of things for tech? Really more, again, not the academic, what we do in the curriculum, but more of equipment? Anybody? All right. Meetings, the administrators' contract? I don't know if you want to say anything about that, or would you make a motion?
Well, the, the contract was bargained in very good faith. It was done over one session, and was our, our negotiating process was led by our board attorney, Floyd Dugas, and administrators had a representative for themselves as well. Chikulua and I sat in on the process, our board chair was available by phone to update and to inform along the way. And we feel that what has been bargained has been representative of fair, fair to both the administrators and fair to the board, especially in light of what the average rates of increase are across the state for, for bargaining units. There's minimal language changes to the contract. It's really more all about just increased health insurance, cost sharing for the administrators, an increase roughly three percent per year, which takes in both salary as well as TSA additions, and that's sort of a summary of where we are.
The WASA contract was made effective July first, twenty eighteen, through June thirty twenty twenty.
Okay. Second. Okay, Megan, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Good. All right, thank you. Okay. All right, so we're going into executive session?
Actually, a public comment that's after that as well, but it's after that, so.
Oh, it's after that? Can, can we vote to move the public comment ahead of it, or are we open with that? Okay. Marsha, do we have anybody? No? Okay. So we're not actually adjourned in the meeting, because we have an executive session, but we're asking everybody, please, accept the board.